Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well today, and we're going to go ahead and call the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting of June 22 to order. Now that we've followed to our order, may I please have roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmembers Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina? Mayor Medina?
Here. Thank you, Mike was too far down, low on the volume. Councilmember Mason will be with us shortly, as soon as she's available. So we will go ahead and proceed on to item number three, Public Comments for Items Not on the Agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not pursuant to state law. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? If so, if you could raise your hand, and City Clerk will bring you in. I'm not seeing any hands, last call for public comments, items not on the agenda. We will then proceed on to item number four, which is the study sessions. Item A, adopt resolution declaring the results of the June 15, 2021 mail ballot election in connection with the proposed storm drainage and flood protection fee and abandoning proceedings. And at this time, we're going to turn it over to our city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, and community members watching remotely or at home. My name is Javon Brogan, and I'm the city manager for the city of San Bruno. The item that is before us today is certification of the election results for the city's storm drainage and flood protection fee. The objective of the brief presentation, subsequent discussion, and action will be for the city council to adopt a resolution declaring the results from the June 15, 2021 mail-in ballot election in connection with the proposed storm drainage and flood protection fee and abandoning procedures. There's an alternative to the council desire. You can adopt the resolution and give staff direction regarding storm drainage financing and/or the proposed 2021-22 stormwater budget. Because the fee did not pass, there is a $1 million deficit that we do need to address. And so of those two items, longer-term financing and solutions for our enterprise and the upcoming budget, the upcoming budget discussion is the most important, and we have prepared some background slides, and both myself, the finance director, as well as your staff in the Public Works Department that run our stormwater system are prepared to answer questions and support the council through your deliberations. And so the first portion of this presentation will actually be given by our city clerk regarding certification of the election results. So now I will invite Melissa Thurman to the virtual podium to provide the next two slides.
Thank you, and hello, Melissa Thurman. I'm the city clerk for the city of San Bruno. And on June 16, 2021, just this past week, I and the deputy city clerk, Vicky Hachey, as well as two of our consultants from Willdan, performed a ballot opening where we sat in conference room 115, where city manager Brogan is now, and we opened up 5,226 ballots, and this was recorded on Zoom and made public at the time the ballots were opened. As I said previously, there was 5,226 total votes cast, and at the conclusion of the opening, there were 1,833 yes votes and 3,310 no votes, which means that the motion failed. So the measure did not pass. If we can go to the next slide, please? During the counting process, there was 83 ballots that were rejected for various reasons, which are listed here on the screen. We had ballots that were returned in the envelope, but they were missing a signature. So the yes or the no was checked, but the signature, which was very important, was missing. We needed to identify the property owner as the voter. And so since we were unable to do so, since their signature was missing, we did have to reject 23 of those ballots. We also received ballots where no choice was marked, it was just blank. We received some ballots where it was really unclear if it was yes or no. Perhaps they scribbled it out, and they didn't initial next to the one that was correct or indicate to us which one was the one they wanted. And so after determining between all four of us, we just couldn't come up with the decision as to what they meant, we did mark those as rejected. So that was, we had 24 that was no choice marked, 32 that was unclear. We did receive four duplicate ballots, which means that the original ballot was sent to us. We had already counted it, and then at some point during the counting process, we had the same exact ballot being counted again. And that typically was because the property owner forgot that they had already submitted a ballot. So they requested a separate ballot and voted twice, probably just on, it's an innocent mistake. It happens sometimes, you just forget that you've already filled something out. So we had four of those. And then we surprisingly had zero empty envelopes. It's pretty easy to forget to put the item in the envelope. So we only had zero of those. So those were the 83 rejected ballots. And then we also received quite a few, I believe the count is now over, we're still receiving them, over 200 ballots that were received after the June 15, 2021 deadline. They're coming in through the mail. So those are also being counted as rejected. And like I said, we are currently over 200 of those, and they are still coming in. We also issued 34 replacement ballots. Typically, this was done because the property owner says they never received the first one, or they possibly threw it away or forgot that they had received one, so they asked for a second. And so we mailed those out before the end of the ballot closure. And I believe that is the end there, but if you can go to the next slide?
That is, that is the end. So council members, we will return to certification of the elections at the conclusion of the presentation. So staff is available for these remaining sections. I will go through it at a high level. If there are additional questions, either myself or staff will respond. Just a quick overview of your stormwater system. There are a total of just over six employees that are allocated to the city's stormwater system. Street sweeping, as well as stormwater collection, is a part of the unit, as well as customer service activities, people calling in for street sweeping-related matters, as well as storm drain overflows. There's routine repair and maintenance, as well as regulatory compliance and implementing best practices for stormwater trash capture before it goes into our stormwater system. The next, long-range financial plan, I know you've seen before, but it is critical that we talk about this once again. As the city clerk mentioned, our nearly year-and-a-half effort to put forward a revised fee, revising the fee that was set some 27 years ago was not successful. And so that means that the fund is projected to go negative in the 2021-22 fiscal year and a precipitous decline of continued negative activity. As we all know, our funds, when they run negative, someone has to pay the cost or we need to reduce the expenditures. And so we will be faced with that decision in subsequent years, as well as in this current year for the budget that begins in July 21. And I know the city council, as well as staff, is committed to finding a solution to this problem one that will hopefully be accepted by San Bruno property owners or whatever the final mechanism is to obtain more revenue for our stormwater system. The current fee does not cover operating costs nor capital expenditures, and we'll talk a little bit about those. So at a high level, the, why don't we just talk about the proposed budget? That's probably the most appropriate place to begin. So it has a fund balance of $300,000 that will be there projected on July 1. There is just over $650,000 revenue. The vast majority of that comes from the existing fee, where the average property owner pays $47 a year. There are operating expenditures of $1.5 million, which brings a operating surplus and deficit to $800,000. That is that point that the current fee does not cover operating, nor does it cover capital. And the $476,000 that you see there is primarily related to the spyglass project, and we'll talk a little bit about that. It's a very much-needed capital improvement project, one that we were able to receive grant funds, but we still have to pay our match on that federal grant, and that match is just over $400,000. So employees that support our stormwater enterprise are shown above. It's portions of positions, but it's the people that sweep our streets and the people that clean out our storm drains. And so as far as maintenance workers, there's a total of five maintenance workers, half of a lead maintenance worker, 0.4 of a maintenance service manager, and then 5% of various other departmental overhead staff. And together with other personnel, a cost of overtime, part-time, and UAL, that's our pension liability, total personnel budget for this system is $848,000. That alone eclipses the current revenue to the enterprise. Then we have a material and supply budget of just under $300,000. It's worth mentioning that in prior years, that budget was over $500,000. So that budget has already been cut and cuts substantially. And interdepartmental charges and governmental charges connected to the system are another $380,000, which brings that total operating budget to what you saw before, is $1.534 million. With regard to capital improvement projects, there are four active capital improvement projects within your stormwater proposed capital improvement program for the coming year. As the city council knows, that there is a vast number of unfunded projects, projects that are not active simply because of lack of funding, one of the problems that we were trying to address. And so there's a regional stormwater capture project, a trash capture device design and installation project, a stormwater pipeline replacement project, and then the spyglass stormwater storm drain improvement project. And so really quick, I know we've talked about these before with the city council on, I believe it was June 9, when we reviewed our entire capital improvement program. Just would like to highlight them very briefly. So the regional storm capture project at I-280 and I-380, that project is carrying over just over $1.1 million. As the city council knows, staff has obtained grants to support that project. We do not need additional funds at that, at this time for that project, but in the future, there will be significant needs for this project. It's showing a zero requested right now, because we're just in the design phase, and we will populate that number. But this will be a substantial project in the tens of millions of dollars, and we are hoping to receive regional, if not state, and local grants for this, given that it's a regional stormwater capture project. While it is in the city of San Bruno, it does not solely benefit San Bruno. It's important to note that this project was not included in any of the funding mechanisms that were proposed in the fee. This project was always intended to be that regional project that attracts state and federal grants. A local project, however, is certainly our spyglass storm drain improvement project. There are approximately eight homes that have flooded in prior years due to a design issue in our storm drain system, where there is not enough capacity for significant flood, storm events. As the council and the public knows, and certainly two homeowners in that neighborhood know, because we are forced to sandbag their property every winter in advance of the rains, because their properties are prone to flooding and have done so on at least two occasions. So this project is approximately a $1.9 million project. The council did advance approximately $300,000 in prior funds to design this project, and staff went out to apply for grants. And we were awarded a $1.2 million grant from the Federal FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. But we have to pay the grant match, and the grant match is $400,000, and the fund doesn't even have $400,000, and it can't cover its operating expenses. And so that is a, in order, if we would like to accept, truly accept receipt of that grant and move forward with that project, we have to find a way to fund these local improvements. And even when you have a grant, you have to have some local funding. And so that is one challenge that I think we have to find a way to resolve this year. The trash capture device design project, we are requesting an additional $156,000 to move forward with additional trash capture devices. And that, and the storm drain pipeline replacement project, this is connected to a failure that we had, a failure due to the age of our system near Crystal Springs Row and Jennifer Sarah Park. And that storm drain failure was only noticed because the San Francisco PUC was doing work in the area and noticed that our pipe had corroded. And so we were forced to come to the council during the year, and council did set aside $450,000 for that project. And so that project does not need additional funds. And so while we understand that property owners did not elect to contribute to the storm drain and flood protection fee, and that measure failed, there still remains $30 million of master plan projects that we identified in 2017 that we know will cost more than $30 million even today, that are still unfunded. And we know portions of our system are over 100 years old, and that needs to be addressed. There's collection system boxes, there's the regional capture project, and then there's continuing our progress to install those trash capture devices to prevent trash from making its way into our system and out into the bay. And so those remain unfunded needs that we are certainly committed to continuing to work and sort of redoubling our efforts to try and find a way for this enterprise to cover its costs. So notable changes, there's been a few updates since you last saw this. And so the first one is the unsuccessful 218, 218 process, unfortunately, that's just 219. 218 process that we have been after or undertaking for nearly a year. So we remain with a fee that was set 27 years ago. And so there were two strategic initiatives we've re-added. The first one that you see there is to continue to work to resolve the funding challenges in the enterprise, which do present a significant, and at this point, immediate financial to strengthen the city. So let's talk about addressing that deficit. And so we need to address that 2021 deficit, that looming deficit, if you will. And so what are our options? And so this is a repeat of what you've seen before, but currently the projected funding balance is $1 million. And so we have to fund that $1 million, or we have to trim expenditures. Unfortunately, so the staff has identified four options for the city council to consider. The first one is obviously trimming expenditures. We are not recommending trimming expenditure, as I mentioned in the prior slides. We are, we have already cut our supplies and material budget. We want to maintain the individuals in the street sweeping program that we currently have. And for our capital improvement program, we think it's absolutely critical that we take advantage of the $1.2 million that the federal government has given us through a grant and identify a way to move forward with that important spy project of a spyglass neighborhood. Option two is to look at our baseline general fund budget and eliminate $1 million of expenses to cover that deficit. And I know the city council knows as well that unfortunately, we have cut our general funding cut severely in the prior budget year by merely 24 positions and reduced expenditures and held other things at baseline. And so the ability to reduce services to the community further is not something that of these options rank high on the list, but that is certainly an option for the city council to consider, is further service reductions. The city council could appropriate funds from Measure G, and so we will talk about that. And you can also utilize funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. So to go through the last two very quickly, and then pause for council deliberations and questions. Measure G, as we know, is a hasn't sales tax, a general purpose revenue tax that in the next fiscal year, we're projecting to bring in 3.5 million. You have the ballot language there, because we always like to provide this. So that is the ballot language that was connected with Measure G. While stormwater was not mentioned explicitly, the city council does have the discretion to appropriate Measure G funds for the stormwater enterprise. With regard to Measure G, just really quickly, it's worth noting, and we will talk about this slide in greater detail later on tonight during our regular meeting when we address item 6A, which is adoption of the full budget for fiscal year 21-22. But I just want to put this slide up, because when we talk about Measure G funding, it's important for the city council to know for this discussion that no matter which of the proposals that you have before you, whether it's the city manager's initial proposed budget, that is that first column with numbers, the amended proposed budget, that reflects conversations that we had with the city council in the direction to reduce position requests on Measure G, or the Oversight Committee's recommendations, which does not include three line items that were in the amended proposed budget. At all of those levels, you have more than a million dollars of Measure G fund balance left. And so you could, if you choose either one of those scenarios, have the $1 million to cover the this-year budget deficit in stormwater, $1 million. So using this slide to point this out, I know there's a lot of information on this slide, and we will talk about that at our next meeting. With regard to ARPA funding, or American Rescue Plan Act funding, the city council knows this chart very well, so I won't again not go through it all. But through this chart, again, I just wanted to point out, with based on the ARPA recommendations that you have in the amended proposed budget, that very bottom-line number of $2.9 million rounded, unallocated ARPA funds, you do have sufficient ARPA funds to cover the measured, cover the stormwater deficit of $1 million from ARPA, and that little red box shows. Next, this is a repeat, but I just want to point this out for council again. And again, we will have this discussion at our next meeting. But should the city council choose to fund those four positions that were initially proposed to be funded by Measure G with ARPA, and that's the Economic Development Manager, the Police Officer, the Firefighter, and the Fire Inspector? Remember, those were Measure G recommendations in the city manager's proposed budget. Should you elect to fund those through ARPA? Just want to point out again here, that even with those allocations, you will have sufficient funding to cover that one-year stormwater deficit. Now, these are, of course, funds that we can't rely on in perpetuity, but I just wanted to point that out to the city council. So staff believes that the most appropriate funding sources would be Measure G and ARPA, and/or ARPA, and happy to support those discussions. And so that's what this slide shows, is that we recommend that you adopt the resolution and then to provide direction to staff on that $1 million looming deficit for next fiscal year, utilizing either Measure G, ARPA, or some combination of the two. Thank you very much. Happy to take any questions or return to any portions of this slide during your deliberation.
Thank you, city manager, for your report. I'd like to ask my colleagues at this time if anyone has any questions. Not direction, not opinion, but questions on the presentation that we just received. Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one question off the top of my head is, do we anticipate doing some sort of a postmortem on the election process and getting some idea of whether or not we approached it incorrectly, whether or not we should do another attempt at this, or are we just going to move on?
Okay, have we done a, I will say that we have had an internal hot wash and debrief of the entire effort already, and have looked at a number of factors. I will say that, at least from staff's perspective, there appears to not be one thing on why the effort was not successful. I think that there are very likely a combination of factors. With regard to, will there be an initial effort, a additional effort? With the votes being two to one not in favor, I would not recommend going back out in an immediate sense with the same structure with simply a re-articulation, right? Even with this $1 million deficit that we're facing. I think the two-to-one margin, the community has said that the storm drain fee as proposed is not acceptable. And I think we have to have further conversations and further analysis to actually define exactly why, and that there could be various reasons why. But certainly, as an organization, we cannot lose sight of the challenge that is before us. It is not a today challenge, it is not a yesterday challenge. Stormwater has been a fiscal challenge for this city for quite some time. And in 27 years, the fee has not been increased. So we are essentially at a point where, you know, probably for lack of a better term, the effort was a Hill Mary to avoid going into the red, in that Hill Mary fifth. And so now we are, we have, we stretched off that time period for 27 years in not increasing the fee. And then when we did that, it was not successful. But the need for the $30 million of improvements is not going away. And even if you take that away, the current fee does not cover just operating costs with maintaining the system we have now. So we have to continue to have conversations about it.
Okay, thank you. And I know that that was always the fear when the conversation happened over the years. It was always, it was always suspected that it would be a difficult thing to accomplish. And so we attempted it, and we got our answer, so thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you. So I've got a brief question on slide number eight, the long-range financial plan slide. I just want to get an understanding of how this, how this works. The, obviously, we see the, we see the $1 million deficit there in, I don't know you're bringing it up, but I'll start talking anyway for the interest of time. We see the $1 million deficit there in this coming fiscal year, and then it continues to build. Obviously, we're going to be funding that, we're going to, we'll talk about how we're going to fund it. But obviously, we're going to, we're going to fund that. When that gets funded, do each of the next four boxes reduce by a bit over a million? Or do those, did each of those out years also assume that we have to fund it? So that's what, that's what the operating deficit is going to be in '22-23? Does my question make sense?
Absolutely. The answer is probably more complicated and has multiple parts, so let me step through it. The deficit does increase by approximately $1 million a year. The assumption that we will fund it may not be the case. We may simply decide that we do not have the funds for stormwater CIP projects without additional revenue and only fund operating and have a much smaller deficit. That is certainly our option. And the city has made very difficult funding decisions in the past of not repairing needed stormwater infrastructure. And so that will not be a new decision to San Bruno. With limited resources, you have some tough choices. And so the city could reduce expenditures. You could cover it with another funding source, like the general fund or Measure G on more of an ongoing basis. I think the challenge with that is it pushes off other programs and services and improvements, and that's a balance. The city council could fund it in a way, and potentially, there is a loan payback, right? Where you may fund it from a source, but the fund still becomes negative because when the fund is healthy enough to recover itself, it pays back that funding source. This type of fund may have a challenge in doing that, but those are certainly options that we will have to address.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is regarding Measure G. You know, the vote count was last Wednesday. The Measure G committee had their meeting on Friday. I understand that they couldn't make any kind of a formal recommendation or anything. I think we would have seen that. But do we get any sense from the Measure G committee what they would think about using Measure G funds for this? I know the timing didn't work out very well for that, but if there's any input, that would be helpful.
Sure. There was brief, very brief conversation about that, but in reality, I would say the committee did not delve down into that topic significantly. But there was a comment made by one commissioner that in looking at all of the proposed funding requests, there was a recognition that the 1 million dollars was a sort of immediate problem and maybe a interest in looking at that before some of the other recommendations. But I would say that the committee did not have a full discussion on that, but the committee did make extremely clear that Measure G, in their, using their words, was the community articulated the need to improve roads. And because of COVID, that has not happened significantly or at all. We did no road projects with the Measure G money last year. And while we are allocating 1.4 million for Measure G, they would like to see road projects and other things that directly align to that ballot language before other things in general. That's not to say that if we went back to the committee that there wouldn't be some tolerance in recommending funding a portion of the stormwater, but candidly, it just wasn't a big part of the discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Medina. If we could go back to the slide and go forward one from where it was previously, please.
Forward one.
Yeah, go one more. There you go. Thank you. It's disappointing, but I think understandable in this election. It's very difficult to have property owners willing to pay more. But the council did the right thing in making the tough call to follow the law, to attempt to raise those fees because we're seeing now with this slide alone that the current money isn't making it. And we have, as we're going to see later today, the million-dollar hole we need to fix here is taking a million dollars away from other things that we all would like to have. And we already know, as we're going to find out later tonight, we have millions of dollars in street light poles that need to be replaced. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars in street signs that need to be replaced.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor? I apologize. Can we keep it to the questions and to the storm?
Yeah, I'm almost there.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I thank you for your indulgence. So here we are, once again, familiar dealing with not having the funds to take care of the basics. And it's timely in that we're going to be talking about budget in an hour and a half or so. So for the time being, I am in support of getting us through this year, preferably with ARPA funding. I did a little tiny bit of research on what other California cities are doing to fund their stormwater. There are other things that are possible, and we'll need to have that discussion. I agree with Councilman Salazar. We need to have a postmortem on what happened. I'm hoping that what we'll see is our residents have fatigue in feeling that they're always paying more. But the truth is, in stormwater, we've been paying the same since 1994, and that money doesn't stretch out anymore. So those are my comments for now. My last question would be for a city clerk for the ballots that have been received late, do they get opened? And do you make note of the way the vote went? It would just be interesting to see how that ultimately wound up being. Thank you.
Jovan, I can answer that, the last question there. This is Melissa Thurman, City Clerk. The answer is no, we do not open those ballots. We've just been collecting them in a pile. With the election being over, it's, we don't want to open any ballots outside of a public forum.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask whether there's plans to send a survey. I know in the past, there have been surveys by the city done pretty quickly, and if we would be able to get a survey out as soon as possible since it's still quite new, and ask questions like, would a sunset have made a difference? Would the annual increase, you know, I don't know, at a lower rate made a difference? Would a phase-in approach during a pandemic year made a difference? I think that, you know, this all, even though it's been waiting for years, I think that this came to this council quite quickly. And I think it was okay that we asked the public. That's what we said, let's see what the property owners decide. But I think it's also worth it to step back now and reflect on what tweaks may make a difference for the future success. Thank you.
Okay. I have no questions myself, since all council members had that opportunity. We'll see if there's anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this topic. If so, if you could raise your hand now, and the city clerk will bring you in the room. Last call for any public comment. Seeing no public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the council for comments and/or direction. Councilmember Salazar.
One final question, follow-up to the vice mayor's question to the city clerk. I was watching the proceedings as the envelopes were being opened, and I heard the comment that some people mistakenly had thought that they were being asked to pay a fee, and they had submitted checks. And I'm wondering if any of those latecomers have checks in there? If we could at least make sure that we're not keeping anybody's check mistakenly.
That is a good question. This is Melissa Thurman, City Clerk. That's a good point that I hadn't considered. I'll need to probably discuss that with our city attorney to see how best to proceed, only because I, myself, I feel uncomfortable opening any ballot outside of a public forum, and yet I can also see if we are returning. Yes, we did have multiple ballots that had checks enclosed because I think people looked at them, they saw, they looked at it as an amount due, and so they included a check and marked yes. And it was a little confusing there, so we have returned the checks with a note, letting them know. Yeah, I would need to check that with council and outside council before I would be able to give you an answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, colleagues, comments and direction, please, for staff. I think we heard from the vice mayor where he stands. Councilmember Hamilton.
I think without any specific guidance from the Measure G Oversight Committee, and it doesn't seem like we have time to get it, I think it would make the most sense to fund from ARPA for coming fiscal year.
Thank you. Councilmember Salazar.
So my concern with the one-time funds is that we have a large number of allocations coming from our one-time funds, both Measure G as a sort of a seed account and then everything we're doing with ARPA. And in the way the budget has been laid out, it's sort of a transition where it has implications for long-term commitments to the general fund. And I see this current dilemma that we have now, not as a one-time 1 million dollar hole, but as an ongoing commitment to our general fund now. I don't anticipate, based on everything I've heard, that we would be going back out for another one of these ballots anytime soon. And so I would anticipate that at least for a few years, we would be funding at a minimum the 800,000 operating and some considerable amount of infrastructure projects that are associated with this. So these are long-term commitments. And I understand, you know, tonight, we're kind of looking at it very short term. We have an immediate need to be filled, and we have some one-time monies to do it. But my concern now is more on those other commitments that we've already spoken about in the budget, where we are making those temporary commitments and transitioning to the general fund, because now we have other demands, this very significant demand on the general fund going forward. And so now I'm no longer as comfortable making those commitments, even though it was a transition and we understood that everything else was stable. But now we're looking at a minimum, a million-dollar ongoing commitment from the general fund just to keep stormwater alive. That's without any CIP. And I know through CCAG, there's a number of efforts going on to try to fund these types of projects across the county. My understanding is that only Burlingame has a stormwater fee that increased recently, I believe last year or maybe 2019. But no other city has been able to do this or has taken the step to do this. And so most of our neighbors are going to be in the same boat, and there's probably going to be some significant effort to use either regional or county dollars, perhaps state dollars, to start trying to address these shortfalls. But in the meantime, I think this will be a multi-year effort. So in the meantime, I don't want to see us fall behind on these projects any further. I mean, we heard during a public comment on when this first came up, there are neighborhoods out there that have been waiting since 1984 for their stormwater issues to be addressed. And, you know, they were hopeful that this effort was going to finally provide funds to address those. And now we don't. So, I mean, we've identified some of the bigger projects, but there is a ton of other projects out there, including, you know, what's going on there on De Soto, and they've been waiting patiently all these years. And so I'd like us to make a commitment to start moving forward on those, but that's not going to happen with a one-year allocation. So I have greater concerns in this. I don't disagree with using some one-time funds to get to the projects that were identified, but I'm also very hesitant to commit other funds that are going, I'm hesitant to make other commitments on the general fund, knowing that there's going to be a hole here that we need to fill.
Councilmember Salazar, just so I'm clear, and I listened to you intently, and I understand the concern and worry, were you giving any suggestion on what to use or not, or to use not, none, neither?
So I'll agree with my colleagues that using the ARPA funds is appropriate for the projects that were identified. But I also wanted to lay out the bigger concern, because I think this, it creates, we can't address this in a vacuum. And so I wanted to put this out there so staff has some time to digest. I know we'll dig into this more during the regular meeting later tonight, but I wanted to really open that conversation that this is going to have some huge ripple effects on everything else that we decide with this year's budget.
Understood. I appreciate that. Councilmember Hamilton.
There's two other comments I realized I didn't make earlier. The, also, as Councilmember Mason stated, I would be in favor of doing a survey to get, you know, of the folks who voted, just because that would be helpful. And I am in favor of doing a, I would like to participate in some capacity, and as I'm sure my colleagues would in that postmortem, because, you know, I did, and I'm sure my colleagues did, spend a lot of time talking to people and hearing their concerns. And we need to, you know, make sure that all that information is available for, so that we know, you know, when and if we go back out with this question again in a couple of years, that we know that we're better armed for that. I don't think that that's something that needs to take place right away, because obviously, as Councilmember Salazar said, we're not going to be going back out asking this question again for quite some time. Thank you.
Okay. We'll have Councilmember Mason, and then I will finish it up. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one more request. If we could get a list of the top 20 parcel owners in San Bruno and their votes, that would be a big help also to determine whether that swayed the outcome one way or the other. Thank you.
I'll let the, our city attorney and our city manager, not now, but take council comments on that. I'm going to, you know, I think city manager already indicated at the beginning, as he talked about, having time to reflect and going back and analyzing that. So didn't have, he didn't specify as to when and/or how, but that that would be occurring, obviously not in this forum, but it would be. So that he'd already committed to. City manager can correct me, but that would be happening. They've already had some initial dialogue on this. I concur with my colleagues as far as where the money should come from and they meet it. I certainly concur with Councilmember Salazar as far as the ongoing concern, because this, if it wasn't for the federal government, this money wouldn't be here, and it was through the COVID-19, not a way you want to get it. So in essence, going forward, it helps us leg along, but it doesn't get us by how we need to. So I think city manager, unless you need more, you have a direction from council for the 1 million to be taken out of the ARPA. Am I correct, city manager? Go ahead, please.
You are. I'll just say that there's been a lot of conversations about taking a look at, doing a postmortem and additional efforts. Why don't I commit that we will schedule a study session with the city council to talk about everything before we embark on a specific effort? I do think there's a number of discussions that need to happen with the city council in regard to Councilmember Mason's request to take a look at the top 20 largest property owners. We have not gone through and done an examination of who voted which way, and I think we want to have a conversation about that and understand really how we're going to put together that information. So I think the best way would be a study session, and then we can launch the renewed effort to address the stormwater financial challenges based on the direction out of that study session.
Okay. Folks, I can just buy a thumbs up. Is that okay? How city manager just articulated? Study session and then follow-up with question? Yeah.
Can I ask one question first? What about doing a survey of voters? Because that would happen, if we were going to do it, that should happen soon. Is that something that we, the five of us, should agree on?
Well, I think the city manager had addressed that, but I'm going to circle back to, if it's okay, Councilmember Hamilton. City manager, you wanted to do a study session, and I understand what you just said, let's have a study session or articulate a plan on how we're going to get information and/or survey. Didn't use the word survey, so please, city manager.
Absolutely. A survey, and there are other methods that we can talk about to obtain information on why the effort was not successful. So I think sort of allowing staff time to prepare for that study session and present the city council with a range of options. the city council with a with a range of options, as well as potential financial strategies would be beneficial.
But I think the concern too by my colleagues is, obviously, too much time goes by, people forget, or, you know, it's not fresh, right? That just like after, take a lap of the state of Pennsylvania, what made you go where? Why? So I think that was the only concern that's been articulated.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
I completely agree with what you just said regarding the the timing. We would have, we would want it, hit them while it's fresh. And also, the outcome of that survey would be a very important input for the study session. You know, because, you know, if we're going to be talking about strategies and all of that, knowing why people voted one way or another would be a powerful piece of information to have, to have that, to have that study session.
And city manager, I don't want to put you on the spot, because you've articulated to us a couple of times, when you thought study session, how, what were you thinking potentially?
Sure. I know time is of the essence. My recommendation would be that we return to the city council as soon as possible with that study session, possibly even in the July timeframe, so we have time to undertake the survey, as well as other tools that will help examine why the effort wasn't wasn't successful.
Thank you for the clarity. All right, you have direction on that. This is a resolution declaring the results of the June 15 mail ballot is actioned by council.
To the chair. I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution declaring the results of the mail ballot and abandoning future proceedings.
Second.
Motion made by Salazar, seconded by Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason. Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, colleagues. This concludes the study session for this evening. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which is, and that'll be at 7:00 PM. So we will see you in about 30 minutes or so.